Recording in progress.
Recording in progress. Call for order of the regular hanging of the Rio Del City Council. Roll call three.
Mayor Garance here.
Member Tim Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
We have nothing to report on at both sessions. But you really just stand. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which has one nation, without borders, and defensible with liberty and justice for all. Their own own matters, proclamation honoring formerly council member Mayor Jack Thompson. Whereas Jack R. Thompson was born on May thirty first nineteen thirty eight in O'Gallala, Nebraska and raised on an active cattle ranch in Barker, Nebraska. And whereas Jack married his devoted and loving wife Mary Ann on November fifth nineteen sixty at the age of twenty-two. And whereas after the nineteen sixty-four Humboldt County flood, Jack moved his family to California to support and rebuild the community of Rio Del with his uncle Charlie Thompson. And whereas shortly after moving to Rio Del, Jack began working and later managing one-on-one auto parts and was a devoted Christian and in the seventies helped build his church, the Fortuna Church of the Nazarene where he was an active and longtime member. And whereas in nineteen seventy-three, Jack went to work as a machinist at Pacific Lover Company until his retirement in two thousand. And whereas after retiring, Jack became an active, became active in Rio Del City Government and served on both the Rio Del Planning Commission and the Rio Del City Council from two thousand three through two thousand sixteen, serving as mayor from two thousand thirteen to two thousand fifteen. And whereas Jack, during Jack's time serving on the city council, he also served on numerous boards and commissions, including Humboldt Waste Management Authority, Redwood Coast Intermodal Authority, Local Agency Formation Commission, Humboldt County Association of Governments, Humboldt Transit Authority, and Humboldt Delmore Hazardous Waste Response Authority. And whereas Jack was always there to assist the need of the city and the community with his service spanning over many years. And whereas on numerous occasions, Jack pursued the idea of establishing a bottled water enterprise for the city's spring but regrettably never succeeded in bringing it to fruition. And whereas upon his retirement on the city council, he was presented with a bottle of water to commemorate his efforts to the label that read, Monument Spring Bottled Water Company, Rio Del, California. The world's finest natural spring water and trademarked by the honorable Jack Thompson, receiving a round of applause from the public for his dedication. And whereas on July twentieth twenty twenty-two, Jack R. Thompson sadly passed away at the age of eighty-four. Now therefore, I, Mayor Garance, on behalf of the Rio Del City Council, hereby honor Jack R. Thompson for his passion, commitment, and relentless service to the community, the public official, and the citizens of the city of Rio Del. It is truly a pleasure to recognize someone who has given their time so selflessly to the community. He will be truly missed by everyone who knew him. Day of August fifteenth two thousand twenty-two is now our mayor's birthday. And I'm going to, um, how they're really gonna present that to the family. I'm gonna roll. Known Jack a long time since our girls were like in sixth grade and he has done so much for this city and, um, we're gonna miss him. Mary Ann. Um, council member, would I just say anything about Mayor Tim Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Garance. Um, we moved to Rio Del forty-four years ago and our daughter was in the same class as Trilla Thompson in the initial year. And, uh, we became friends with our parents because that's what you do in Rio Del. So we've known the Thompsons for twenty-four plus years. Probably beginning about the time Jack retired, he started recruiting people to get involved with city government. And he started begging me, probably not too long after two thousand, going, you need to get involved. Well, I told Jack I'd love to, but I'm working out of town. I, I, it wouldn't be fair to the community or the rest of the council from me, if he, you know, come home, re-attack it and come to a meeting and then split two hundred miles away or something like that, go work. But in two thousand thirteen, I was retired and, uh, there was a vacancy on the council and I was appointed by this council to, uh, serve with Jack. And a minute, pretty much a minute I got on the council, Jack came over with volumes of reading material. And, I mean, Jack went through all the, all the files, read every resolution, every ordinance this city has ever had. I, I'm just un-unflawed commitment to the city. And wanted, he wanted me to know as much as he, well, uh, Jack, I got other things to do too, but I committed to reading two hours a day, five days a week on this pile. And it's been two plus months to get through. Um, following that, I, I served as Jack's alternate on Humboldt Waste Management Authority and, uh, the authority was in the process of hiring a consultant to, uh, haul the garbage. It was a big deal. I mean, it was a huge thing. And they had, I don't know, seven or so different firms, uh, applying for it. And Jack got me on this committee that was supposed to review all this stuff. And we spent hours drinking coffee over at his kitchen table, uh, going through all of this stuff. And ultimately, you know, we, we got the right people. Unfortunately, they want bankrupt because it doesn't work. But I enjoy, really enjoy working with Jack, finding him.
You want to help?
Yeah, I, I have the, uh, probably just probably been working with Jack longer, at Pacific longer than I do here in the council. But I met Jack in the, in the mid-eighties as he was a machinist and, uh, I was electrician and we, uh, worked together on, um, joint projects. And, uh, for those that didn't appreciate what he did as a machinist, he always referred to his, uh, he like referred to himself as a balancer as he moved on to the, uh, from the machinist side of it in the machine shop. And, and he was truly a very skilled man. And that takes up, it's a high level of perfection, uh, to be able to do those jobs. You know, I think that, that, that over to what he did as a city council member, uh, with his, with his perfectionism. And so that's, I think, what part of, part of his nature was to do a great job and to dig into things and to make things work. Uh, it was MI effort that he put into. And so I value the time that I, I spent working with Jack, um, both council and work time. And I'm truly going to miss. Great guy.
Thank you all, miss Jack, and, and appreciate everything that he did for the city, um, right now. The, the payment, the thing that we are able to do for the city, all, um, so much of it is owed to Jack. And, and it's really truly appreciated. And we definitely, I, I enjoy working with him and I'll definitely miss him as well. Thank you for all coming.
Thank you. I'm glad you're with us.
Public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and over with the council half jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not allowed under the Vow of Cown Ground Act. Items requiring council action sound listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration, the council directs, unless a fine is made by at least two-thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was closed and is of emergency nature requiring immediate action. Please leave any comments for a maximum of three minutes.
Honorable Chairman, Honorable Counsel, as, uh, not just to be back since COVID happened and we were all, uh, sequestered from our own homes. And that Zoom thing, I hated that thing. That was terrible. And I'm glad that you see we have, uh, everybody back in the base here. And I guess we have, and we have a new lawman in town. And, uh, yeah, and I just wanted, uh, hereby state that my days of being on this career are over. And, uh, I see higher things. Uh, I'm concerned about our water table, uh, problems. Uh, my house, they have the, uh, legalized grow areas. I live right across the river. And, uh, I know last summer my faucet sputtered a little bit. I ran a little more water than usual and happened again when I ran a kind of a test this year. And so it looks like I'm going to have to try to lower my pump down about another twelve feet and, uh, to, uh, avoid that problem. But it is a concern. I know you guys share that concern. And, uh, I don't know if the marijuana industry is contributing much to that. I know that the plant itself, uh, loves a lot of water. And, uh, and, uh, so it, I, it's a matter, I don't know, we may have to, uh, face some hard decisions here in the future about how much water is being used by that industry, cattle industry. Uh, same way, you know, they use a lot of water. Uh, very, very for milk, thirty-one gallons of water per gallon of milk. Pound of beef, I don't even know how many gallons of water. But, uh, yeah, and I know we're gonna have to face some tough choices and, uh, we'll just have to, um, face those that would come because obviously I don't have answers for that. This, uh, drought seems to be affecting everyone. But thank you for your time and I need to go and have dinner. So I mean, I, I, I've got company at my house, so I'm going to excuse myself. But thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to come down and speak.
Thank you.
Any hand raised? Any email? Rich, anything?
Yeah.
Come on out.
Except for working with the environment. Rich Newman. And it's great to be here. And you see all your faces, though he might not want to see mine. But anyway, glad to be back.
That is a your benefit.
Glad you guys are back. This is your one.
This is somebody who can always count on you here. Exactly.
Yeah.
Our one. I can rest any day down. Um, move to the council calendar. Is there anyone who would like to pull any items from the council calendar? Email and hand raised? Okay, is there a motion then to approve this in the council? I saw a motion and there's a second. A motion and a second. Motion carries by zero. Okay, city manager and staff update, page twenty-seven in our page.
Thank you, Mayor Garance, members of the council. Uh, so we are working on, uh, the replacement for the city hall website. Uh, the replacement itself is, is gonna look, uh, similar to the, the current version with some updated features, um, including, uh, a new method of, uh, displaying the, uh, uh, agenda management system for the city council planning commission. Uh, right now we have a scheduled date of October sixth for the system to go live. We're working just today on the initial design of, of the, of the website and some, uh, features that will be adjusted for, uh, for the new format. But, uh, that is underway. Uh, staff is taking a look at some of the, uh, potential modifications to, uh, the Rio Del Police Department. Uh, there are some, uh, needed, uh, upgrades that need to happen down there. Um, we are working with the, uh, city attorney to go over bidding processes for the, uh, for the work, uh, but there's some flooring issues and, and just some painting and, and general cabinetry changes that we're looking into. Uh, and then I'll also remind the council that, uh, on, uh, September twenty-second and twenty-third, there'll be virtual Redwood Economic Development Summit. So the city is putting together, uh, information for that, uh, for that event that happens annually. We participated, I think, uh, for the past four years in one way or another in that, uh, in that event. Uh, and I think, uh, in terms of our grants, um, we are undergoing some changes with our city engineer and staffing. And so, uh, we are, uh, reassigning, uh, the project leads for those projects. So in particular, there's three main projects coming up. Uh, one is the Eel River Trail, non-motorized trail, uh, between Edwards and Davis Street. Uh, we'll be reassigning, uh, the project lead for that. Uh, there's also our Gateway Unification Project. We will probably be looking at a third-party, uh, landscape architect to help us through that, uh, process. Somebody who has, uh, expertise in, uh, plantings in particular, uh, but is able to, uh, execute the overall project, which also includes, uh, exercise stations. Uh, and then we also have upcoming, um, the Ireland Streets, uh, what is commonly referred to as a dog park, but it is a mixed-use, uh, park facility that also include, uh, some, uh, basketball amenities and, uh, and other features incorporated into the project. So we're kind of changing teams on those three projects, but I don't think there's gonna be any, uh, substantial, uh, you know, delays or anything from that. We still have plenty of time to put those packages together and, and see construction during two thousand twenty-three, the summer of two thousand twenty-three. So we're excited to move those projects forward. Uh, other than that, uh, once the council has any questions, uh, for, uh, staff, happy to return it back to the, to the mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Tim. You want all, yeah? Um, here it says interviews for police officers positions. So we have some people that have applied.
Correct. So we have, uh, three, eight, or actually there were four total, one pulled out. So, uh, we, uh, have interviewed two so far. We are scheduling a third interview and we'll kind of move from there. But we do have some prospects for, uh, filling the currently vacant position.
I don't know. Now's the time to ask. But, um, somebody who lives up on your street there was asking about PG&E lines.
Yes. So unfortunately, it looks like there is, uh, a gas leak under or immediately adjacent to, uh, some of the new paved areas on Cherry. Um, so Pacific Gas and Electric has done a USA and marked out some of the other utilities in the area in anticipation of having to, to dig that up. And so, uh, I think, you know, uh, this is an unfortunate and unforeseen, you know, circumstance. Uh, and I think staff is gonna have to really be on top of PG&E to make sure that when they go and do that patch, that to, that it's done correctly. So it's compacted and set appropriately and it shouldn't be, uh, there's really no excuse for it to be anything other than, than a good, you know, patch job. So, I don't know if Manny has anything else to add to that.
And it will be done.
So when we do something like that, do we ask PG&E to come first before we go ahead and do it or that?
Uh, so we have, so we have not asked, but I'm not sure if this is a, a situation that existed prior or if it is something that resulted as a result of the construction.
Oh, thank you. And it isn't all along, it's just like one, you know, spot.
The current markings are actually the utility that are in the road. And there's an intersection on the service line and the main that goes to the house. It's two six five or something like that. Anyway, it's that service line that's split in the. So just a small spot. This is about there. This is the one that's.
Thank you. Just one more. Really, you're gonna be, um, going down a long while. Down at the other end, we have, I'm not sure, they look like electrical boxes or something that's been repeated on. There's I think it's painter's stream. It's a green one that's got repeating all over. Where are those boxes that aren't? Then there's another one down that has a meteor on it, on plywood.
Oh, uh, down by the, those are the hours for the sign and the guiding sign and, uh, the last.
Okay.
So they start there and they will constantly median down median to the first, uh, Rio Del sign.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember, um, her, no question. Okay. Sorry about that. Councilmember Wilson?
No question.
And then I have no questions. So thank you. And we will, are there any? Rich, did you have any questions?
No.
Another hand raised?
No.
Any email? And we will close the city manager's app update and move on to the second reading by title only in a DOT ordinance number three nine five dash two zero two two for organic reduction and recycle, page zero thirty in our page. Sitting at.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Garance and members of the council. As, uh, you're aware, uh, we last, uh, had the first reading back on July nineteenth of this year for this, uh, particular ordinance. Uh, it is required by SB thirteen eighty-three and is in compliance with, uh, our obligations uh, in, in regards to that. Um, so just a quick, uh, summary. Uh, the city has received, uh, approval for a five-year waiver from many of SB thirteen eighty-three's requirements. However, some of those requirements do remain, uh, and are related to mostly education outrage of, uh, commercial edible food recovery, uh, and, uh, building and landscape codes, uh, for new construction. Uh, so the attached, uh, ordinance addresses those issues. Uh, and because Rio Del's existing food, uh, business inventory is limited, uh, most if not all, uh, of those businesses do not meet that, uh, those criteria. So the impacts of the business community at this point in time are anticipated to be light, uh, and thus there's not gonna be, uh, necessarily a whole lot of enforcement uh, in that regard. Uh, but there will have to be, uh, demonstratable public outreach efforts, uh, that we will be including in the newsletters and, and that sort of thing. Um, so with that, uh, unless the council has any questions for staff, I'll try to answer them and, uh, return it back to the mayor and see if, uh, see if there's any further questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Yeah, I'm just gonna keep, I keep mentioning it. It's thirteen eighty-three and is actually a big deal. It doesn't, it does not get, I think, the attention that it needs to the public. You know, we, we talked about it here. We talked about it, SWMA. But it's, it's, it's gonna be something that's, that's, eventually it will come to the place where you have to have another means of taking edible food waste and putting it into your garbage. And how that works with universal pickup, that's probably one of the big reasons that we're gonna need to move ahead with universal pickup. And, and then how that's processed to, through SWMA to turn into compost is all being figured out. So the Eureka, Antarctica and the county will do a lot of the, the groundwork ahead of us and we can follow in their steps. But the fact that we are doing the due diligence, uh, shows us that we're doing everything we can. Otherwise, we can need, uh, find the considerable amount of money. So, um, as a city, the responsibility falls to the jurisdictions themselves, not SWMA to, uh, Rio Del, which is, uh, so I guess stay tuned because you're, you're gonna hear a lot more about it. Just the way it is. Thank you for your appreciation.
Councilmember Carter? Yeah, um, not a question so much, just to kind of go off what council member Wilson was saying. Just gonna reiterate the importance of public outreach and education. I think nobody knows what this is unless they sit in on these meetings. Um, and so, yeah, newsletter, if we're ever gonna do like a public forum question and answer thing, I'd be more than happy to come down and be part of that. Um, so just voluntary for that. But, yeah, any way we can help, I would love to help. But I do think we're to tell people what's happening. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson? Thank you. Mayor Tim?
No questions, Mayor Garance.
Okay, and, um, I agree with our outreach, um, uh, plan. I think newsletters are good. If we have to do a flyer and it'll, um, council member Carter did. If we do a forum, maybe we can get someone from, um, uh, from Eel River or whatever entity it needs to be that's directly related that can give us information, give the citizens information. That would be a really good, uh, good point, too. So, um, are there any hand raised or emails? Have anything, Rich? Okay, then, um, is there a motion to , uh, adopt, approve and adopt resolution? Ordinance rather. Three nine five dash two zero two two, organic reduction and recycle. So moves. You have a motion? Is there a second? Oh, second. There are a motion and a second. Motion carries by zero. Now we'll move on to council reports.
Councilmember Carter? Uh, I actually don't have a special words. Um, our nuisance, uh, vacant committee meeting tomorrow is canceled. So if anybody's listening and was gonna come to that, don't come to that. Come to the next month one. Um, and, and that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Tim Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Garance. Um, I think two meetings ago, I brought up the, uh, topic of a mural here at city hall. And, uh, I think we probably need to, there, there wasn't, uh, you know, a consensus or, you know, to, to do that. But I think maybe to have an ad hoc committee or the walkability, you're paid to pride group committee.
Committee, uh, might fall in their hands. But somebody with more art. Artistic appeal than I have, and I'm a stick figure guy.
Well, you like to say that you're the person?
Yeah, that, you know.
Can, can I ask one question back to you? So when you're talking about a mural at the, at city hall, where are we talking? I mean, across the front of the building?
Well, I think maybe I'll begin by the, please, the police army. Uh, I think that'd be the most useful.
New car. Yeah, everyone amenable to that conversation?
I am.
So is, that's a referral to the, the beautification committee, was that?
A referral or?
Yeah, that, that would be.
Okay, works for me. Okay, let me know.
Yeah, okay. Okay, um, and.
That's all I have.
I thought you have, and then Councilmember Will. Councilmember Woodall? Oh, I just wanted to say that the Wildwood Days was a really nice Wildwood Days. I mean. It's a bit, it's been in a long time. It was so nice to see the community out and about. Um, to the volunteer fire department, I can't praise them enough how fast they pulled that to get. I mean, three days before, I'm thinking, oh my God, they can't do it. But the day, uh, they've got it all done, um. Our businesses were great. DJs put on a wonderful barbecue, brought a lot of people. Down, um, that's very lovely. Mary Carr, the cars, Mary Burks, that had a wonderful car show, um. One-on-one donated things, the, it was just nice. It was great to see everyone out and I hope they can do that again. And it was the first, I mean, um, Greg was. In the, um, prey, but afterwards he was down in the park and milling around and it was wonderful. People were coming up to him and talking to him. And, you know, he was interacting with them. That was good to see too. That's what we need. And I went to my Humboldt Friends Authority meeting and. Wasn't much, but the one good thing is ridership is building back up after COVID and. They have to build back up because if they don't use their pair of offices, they'll get sort of, um, robbed. So it's, it's going in the right direction and that's all I have. Thank you. And I have nothing to report. I just wanna, uh, my dear best friend Nancy Curts had a long. Accident, health scare and the, yeah, she's failing up and I just wanted to wish her well, tell her all. That's all I have. There's like a.
Yeah, second.
Beginning of nerve and it's all the different things.
You have a photo of my chairman. You talked to me about that last time.